Welcome, everyone, not only to this November first meeting of the Milton Select Board, but to the month of November itself and all that will follow it in the months to come. I'm Arthur Doyle, serving this year as Chair of your Select Board. And I'd like to introduce the other members of the board who are with us at this point. Mr. Wells, due to a pre-existing conflict, is not able to be with us this evening. And Ms. Musto, maybe a few minutes later, Mr. Vice Chairman, may we turn it to you?
Mike Zulus, Vice Chair, good evening.
Aaron?
And Aaron Bradley, member.
Nick?
Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator.
Lynn?
Lynn Tenaple, Executive Assistant to the Select Board.
And we have Town Council Kevin Freitag with us as well. On July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law, other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, to March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. As we are in a Zoom meeting, all votes will be by roll call. And at this time, could we all join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the Constitution of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we'll enter public comment. We have fifteen minutes set aside for public comment. And speakers are invited to speak for up to three minutes during that period of time. And we have a few hands raised in the order on which I saw them raised. I will call them, first was Mr. John Rowe. Mr. Rowe, you are recognized.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Perfect, okay, I just wanted to talk about item number seven on the agenda, specifically the intersection of Route twenty-eight and Chickatobit Road. Mass DOT is proposing to put a miniature rotary in there, instead of adding a center-left-hand turn lane. And I'm against that. And I know that the Board of Selectmen are going to write a letter to Mass DOT either promoting this or not promoting it. And I'm simply asking for the Board of Selectmen, before they submit that letter or draft that letter, that they ask for neighborhood input. I've lived in the neighborhood for thirteen years, and I go through this intersection at least twice a day, sometimes more than twice a day. And I have witnessed, I've witnessed probably ten car accidents. There have been scores of car accidents in the thirteen years I've lived here. And ninety-five percent of those accidents are people on Route twenty-eight making a left-hand turn, either northbound twenty-eight or southbound twenty-eight onto Chickatobit Road. And the reason why the accidents occur is because if there is, if there are two cars, one northbound, one southbound on Route twenty-eight making a left-hand turn, there's a blind spot. And the people are not taking risks going in front of cars, there's a blind spot. And they cannot see the oncoming traffic to the right of the person in front of them. And they think it's clear to go, and they make a left-hand turn, and the car comes up, and there's a car accident, the person coming in the opposite direction hits them. And, you know, this is not a matter of people taking risks, it's a matter of a blind spot. And Mass DOT doesn't understand this. And like I said, I go through this intersection at least twice a day, sometimes more than twice a day. And I have witnessed, I've witnessed probably ten car accidents. There have been scores of car accidents in the thirteen years I've lived here. And ninety-five percent of those accidents are people on Route twenty-eight making a left-hand turn, either northbound twenty-eight or southbound twenty-eight onto Chickatobit Road. And the reason why the accidents occur is because if there is, if there are two cars, one northbound, one southbound on Route twenty-eight making a left-hand turn, there's a blind spot. And the people are not taking risks going in front of cars, there's a blind spot. And they cannot see the oncoming traffic to the right of the person in front of them. And they think it's clear to go, and they make a left-hand turn, and the car comes up, and there's a car accident, the person coming in the opposite direction hits them. And, you know, this is not a matter of people taking risks, it's a matter of a blind spot. And Mass DOT doesn't understand this. And like I said, I go through this intersection at least twice a day, sometimes more than twice a day. And I will just add that when I'm making a left-hand turn onto Chickatobit Road, and there's somebody in front of me making a left-hand turn, I wait, I wait until the light turns red. And I turn, I make a left-hand turn on the red light, once I can see that all the traffic has stopped. But, you know, I live in the neighborhood, people who don't live here don't know how to maneuver this. So I believe that what the town should support is a third lane, a third left-hand turn lane only. And left-hand turn should only be on a green arrow. So again, I guess, I don't know, I don't know if you've written the letter, but I really would like the opportunity to review the letter before it's submitted to the state.
We have, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Before we move to the next speaker, Lynn and Nick Roxanne is trying to get in and is unable to do so. If someone could assist her, please, thank you.
Okay, so should I just hang up now?
If you completed, Mr. Rowe, that would be fine.
Yeah, yeah, sure, just one thing, can I follow up, I guess with maybe Mr. Milano on the letter? I'd really like to help on this.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, good day.
The next hand, again in order, is that of Cindy Christensen. Could we promote Dr. Christensen, please?
All right, I'm speaking tonight to report some of the shenanigans that the FAA has engaged in regarding membership selection for their next-gen advisory committee, an advisory committee that the FAA uses in much the same way that the Milton Select Board uses its airplane noise advisory committee. The group that I help lead, the Aviation-Impacted Communities Alliance, a national group of over sixty communities affected by excessive aviation noise and pollution, recently reacted to the lack of community representation on the FAA's Next-Gen Advisory Committee, a committee that for years has recommended the four L RNAF implementation and many other next-gen procedural changes that affect Milton residents. When you hear that only one of the thirty members of the NAC is there to represent communities, and that one member is affected only by general aviation and not next-gen implementation at Core Thirty airports, you might think, that's not fair, yet it is how the Milton Select Board has populated its own aviation advisory committee. But the similarities between the FAA and the Select Board don't stop there. When the AICA and the Congressional Quiet Skies Caucus demanded that the FAA populate the NAC to have a balance of points of view, the FAA manipulated its application process and its required qualifications, much like the Select Board has done. But the similarities still don't stop there. With all of the FAA's window dressing of a new process, checking boxes that make them sound good, and claiming unsubstantiated, unbiased decisions, the FAA is returning to its status quo, just like this board has done. We've come to expect the FAA shenanigans and hypocrisy. I've come to expect this Select Board's too. But just like we have found alternative ways to have community voices heard by the FAA, we have other viable options for Milton residents to be heard by some very important people who are and will continue to listen to us, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is identified as Roseanne. Roseanne, you are muted, and you are recognized now. You are now unmuted, Roseanne. You are muted again. Okay, why don't we go to...
Hi, can you hear me now?
Oh, we can, welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm calling in about the Randolph Ave roundabout issue.
Roseanne, could you give us your full name and address, please?
My name is Roseanne Spring, I live at twelve seventy-eight Randolph Ave. That's the westbound side, close to the intersection of Chickatobit and Randolph Ave. And I attended last week's meeting that Mass Highway had. At that meeting, Mass Highway, you know, freely admitted that they only looked at the intersection. They didn't look at the repercussions of this roundabout in north or south of it. I have a petition out that over seventeen hundred people have signed against the roundabout. This is gonna wreak havoc for everybody who lives off of Randolph Ave with a driveway or a street, and anybody who commutes through here. The left-hand turn issue that they're trying to solve is gonna be replicated at every person's driveway and every side street, and it's gonna back up traffic terribly. It's a very myopic view they're taking of this street. And they don't seem to have any concern for everybody who lives on this street. We will be, we will not be able to take lefts anymore, there'll be no breaks in the traffic because this traffic flow will just be steady. And I think, I live here, I see this traffic. You know, back in two thousand five, Mass Highway was supposed to lower the hill and give the drivers going southbound a clean, clear view of the traffic coming over the hill. And Mass Highway put out a project lasted five years on this road, and they didn't lower the hill. And this proposal they're putting through is gonna make life here much harder for everybody, everybody who lives here and everybody who commutes here. And I implore your committee to please write and tell them they need to rework this. A left-hand turn lane is a proven commodity that works in intersections with the protected left green arrow. And for some reason, the common sense view of correcting this situation is totally off the table. In that meeting, it was a done deal to them, and we're all gonna have to live with it.
Thank you, Roseanne.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Mr. Barry Costello is recognized.
Can you hear me?
We can, welcome, Mr. Costello.
Excellent, nice meeting you guys, first meeting for me. I'm also here to talk on item seven, twenty-eight Chickatobit Roundabout. I live at twelve seventy-four Randolph Ave, Roseanne is, I have the pleasure of being Roseanne's neighbor. Also sat through the meeting with Mass DOT, it was, you know, evident, and the DOT acknowledged that they were not thinking anywhere beyond just the intersection. And, you know, I don't have anything different to say than John Rowe already said or Roseanne already said, but I would like to just understand the board's perspective. And, you know, if you're in support of a left-turn lane, it does seem to be a dedicated, you know, it seems to be a proven result that would eliminate all of the car crashes and would have the least amount of disruption to all the citizens. So I'm just curious to understand the perspective of the board. That's all I've got, thank you for hearing me.
You're very welcome, thank you for being with us. Next is Mr. Paul Hogan. Paul, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
We can.
My name is Paul Hogan, I live at fifty-six Pierce Street in Milton. Some of you may recall that I was once on the school committee, was once Chair of the school committee. I also, I've been retained by many of the group that signed the seventeen hundred petition as a spokesperson. I am an attorney, and I've been retained just to be a spokesperson. I want to thank the board members who attended the last Mass DOT meeting. I know Mr. Doyle, Mr. Zulus, and Mrs. Musto listened, and I know Mr. Zulus spoke, and as well as Mr. Doyle and Mrs. Musto. The people of Milton are quite concerned about this, I think you know that. The seventeen hundred people who signed is amazing, I haven't really heard one or many or any say that they are for this. And I'm just not gonna repeat what was said and some of the good points that have already been made tonight. One of those points is, the Mass DOT admitted that they're doing this purely for safety, for that one intersection. They have not undertaken an impact analysis of what the fallout or consequences might be. Some of those that I would raise and add that have already been said. Number one is, when asked, they admitted that the pedestrian lights will no longer be there, that it'll be a flashing yellow light, and those that want to cross will depend on the courtesy of Massachusetts drivers to stop on a flashing yellow light. I live in East Milton, I'm aware of the courtesy of Massachusetts drivers, you have to be careful. Second of all, many people think that the intersection that was changed down by Lano's on the same road, Route twenty-eight down in Randolph, is what they prefer here, dedicated left-hand turns, which you've heard about. And those seem to be working. They mentioned that rotaries, roundabouts are a much safer way. And they introduced a lot of examples across the Commonwealth. It was noted that many of those don't have near the traffic that this has. When questioned, the Mastod admitted that, you know, the northbound on twenty-eight in the morning might just jam up this whole thing, and then people trying to cross from Chickatobit from one side to the other won't be able to do it. Senator Timonti was there, as you know, and he asked that they listened to the town. I did have the benefit of talking to Mr. Wells this week and got a little bit of history. I had a question for the Mastod, is, they said that the town of Milton was a partner in this project. And Mr. Zulus mentioned that the Select Board had never voted on this. And I asked, Mr. Wells told me that there was a meeting five or six years ago between Mike Dennehy and he, and they heard about the project, but I don't know that there was a vote ever such that we could say that the town of Milton supports the project. But I do want to tell the Select Board, they called you partners in this, and they said that Milton supports it. Obviously, seventeen hundred signatures tells a different story. I want to thank the Select Board for taking this up tonight on your agenda. I hope you'll look into it, you've heard a lot of comments, I'm not gonna go on and on, you have a big meeting to fulfill. I know you represent the town of Milton very well, and thank you for this. And if we can be of any help or assistance in this, please let us know. And we ask that you look into this hard and state what your view is on this project, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. We have three more speakers to be recognized, we're tight on our time, but we will accommodate all three. Next is Mr. Philip Johanning.
Hi, Phil Johanning, twenty-three Parkwood Drive in Milton. I want to ask Roseanne if she could come by to twenty-three Parkwood, and John Rowe and I will add our signatures to your petition. I went to the very first meeting of Mastod about this rotary. And I feel that they have not listened, Mastod has not listened to any community input. The owner of A. Thomas Nursery was there, he said people would not be able to leave his parking lot because there would never be an interruption in traffic. All the people along the, who live along the eastern side of Randolph Avenue complained that they would not be able to make right or left-hand turns out of their side streets. So these are things that have already been mentioned. I think that this is a terrible idea. I go through the intersection multiple times a day, on my way to work, on my way home. No matter where I'm going, I go through this intersection. And I, like the previous speaker, am concerned about getting out of Chickatobit Road. I feel like once the oncoming traffic is continuous, I'll never be able to get through to the other side or make a right or left-hand turn. I think this is a horrific idea. I know that Mastod has not listened to anybody on this issue. They've not changed one thing in the plan since the very, very first. I don't know exactly why they have community meetings, because they don't listen to anyone in the community. And I hope the Select Board, but I will agree with the previous speaker that Mike Dennehy was at the first meeting, and he vigorously supported the idea. Mike Dennehy doesn't live here, I don't know on what basis he was supporting. And I'm not sure that any of the Select Board live here, so I don't think any of you do, so you don't know. I think it would be good to get a little more experience with this intersection before any letters are written. I want to mention one other thing quickly. I attended the ANAC committee meeting where they talked about the candidates for ANAC. It really dismayed me that the chair came in and recommended Mr. Pathak based on her experiences with him on the warrant committee a number of years ago. It wasn't because he knew anything about, there was nothing on his application to indicate that he knew anything about the airplane issues. I've never met him, and I've been on all of the grassroots committees. I never saw him at an ANAC meeting. And I haven't seen him at any Select Board meetings where it was discussed. But she came in, she said she thought he was a good guy, and he should be the one. And they all took a vote, and he was their nominee, based on what, I don't know. It seems to me that's Old Town Milton. They didn't review the qualifications, they did talk about the fact that there would be another opening because one of the members was resigning. And they said that they would need additional information, I think, on two or three candidates, and they agreed that they would ask for resumes. But they made their decision without even getting that additional information. And the person with the most qualifications is Cindy Christensen. And they didn't even discuss her qualifications, and they didn't discuss mine. We have both been in this fight for over thirteen years, and neither one of us, our qualifications were discussed. I believe there's, you know, despite the efforts of Roxanne and Aaron, I believe we have the same thing going on that we've seen for years. I believe that Cindy and I have been blackballed. And I believe that is the reason why no one looked at our qualifications at all. We've attended the meetings, we've done the work, and neither one of us was considered, none of our qualifications were reviewed. So, you know, you can talk about change, I don't see it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johanning. Our next speaker is, we have two speakers ahead, Helen Russell. Helen, you...
Unmute. Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and your address, Helen?
One ninety Central Ave, Milton. I'd like to thank all of you for your service, it's not an easy job. And I'm commenting on sort of number seven, because once the cars come down Randolph Ave, they're in the town. And, you know, we're looking at some significant traffic issues on Central Ave, especially with the new Goddard School going in, which means a hundred and sixty cars in and out at eight-thirty in the morning, and, well, between seven and nine, and the same thing at the end of the day. So I don't really know, I'm just, I have, you know, been advocating for traffic calming on Central Ave and connected with a few people on this issue, but I don't really know what your comprehensive approach is on traffic. I think it's a very difficult issue. But it, you know, how do you, how do you kind of get people not to speed? And pass on the right and do all kinds of crazy things that we all see, driving, you know, both on Randolph Ave up where the previous speakers have been talking, and also in, you know, residential streets. So just weighing in and, you know, encouraging you to offer some opportunities for committees or studies. I think the one thing about the school was that the traffic study that was done was based on the old Husick Building with one entrance in and out. And when the building burned mysteriously, they changed the plan, so now there's an entrance in and an entrance out. And there haven't really been any new studies done as a result. So thanks, I know you have a long agenda, thank you again.
Thank you, Helen. And our last speaker, and I apologize if I misspeak your surname, it's Christian Landkeller. Christian?
That was perfect.
The only thing in a long time that I've done right.
Welcome, Christian.
and connected with a few people on this issue. But I, I don't really know what your comprehensive approach is on traffic. I think it's a very difficult issue. But it, you know, how do you, how do you kind of get people not to speed? And pass on the right and do all kinds of crazy things that we all see driving, you know, both on Randolph Ave up where the previous speakers have been talking and also in, you know, residential streets. So just weighing in and, you know, encouraging you to offer some opportunities for committees or studies. I think the one thing about the school was that the traffic study that was done was based on the old Husick Building with one entrance in and out. And when the building burned mysteriously, they changed the plan. So now there's an entrance in and an entrance out. And there haven't really been any new studies done as a result. So thanks, I know you have a long agenda. Thank you again.
Thank you, Helen. And our last speaker, and I apologize if I misspeak your surname. It's Christian Landkeller. Christian?
That was perfect.
The only thing in a long time that I've done right.
I'm one of the.
Welcome, Christian.
I'm one of the few Germans in the town, so I'll, I'll speak freely. My, my question comment is also regarding the rotary. I would be interested, I do travel that road as well every day. I see a lot of the problems that happen every day going up and down, just like everybody else has. But I would be interested, I've heard, I've lived in town quite a while and I've heard a lot of people comments, both from friends that live in that area and from acquaintances who have just probably selling houses, moving away due to the inconvenience or the extreme inconvenience people feel like this is going to cause. I, I attended the meeting, the Mast DOT meeting last week. It was clear that it was a check-the-box meeting. So, you know, that's my opinion. I know maybe somebody else has a different opinion. But it seemed like that was the only solution they, they put forward. But I would like to know, going back to the people selling their houses and as and worried about property values and how that, if anybody at the town board is considering the implications of tax revenue based on lower property values. Because if people can't handle it and it's a lower standard of living and a lower quality of living, they are going to move. And I think that's something that needs to be considered by the board. And I don't know what the board's current position on the rotary is. I'm interested to know. And that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment. And we will now turn to item number four on the agenda. A discussion approval request to approve wetland replication work to take place on town-owned land at Canton Avenue and Highland Ave for the project at Winter Valley. And we have the Chair of the Conservation Commission, John Cannon, with us to address this topic.
Mr. Chair, I do not see Mr. Kieran in.
You will see him under Cannon, there he is.
There it is, thank you very much.
John?
All right, I appreciate all of your time and efforts. And I'm actually speaking very generally to this issue. And the reason I say generally is that the Conservation Commission does not yet have a notice of intent or application before it. If it did, I certainly wouldn't prejudge it. But I can speak generally to the issue. And that is that under the State Wetlands Protection Act, when a resource area is altered, and that, that actually may happen, as I anticipate the proposal from Winter Valley, then if there is an altered area, then replication is required, or at least it would be warranted. And the replication does actually not have to be at the same site as, as long as it serves the resource areas that we protect. In this instance, anticipating that there may be a replication area that is required from the applicant, we did take a look as the board, we had a public meeting and did an inspection at a lot of land that, in all candor, I thought the Conservation Commission owned, but apparently it does not. And it's under the general municipal basis for the select board to make determinations as to whether or not something could be done on that land. The area that we're speaking of is between the entrance to Winter Valley and Highland Street. That's a very, very sensitive area for us. It's right at the split of two watersheds, one on the police station side of Highland actually feeds Equity Brook. The, the area of land on the, I guess it would be the south side of Highland Street would be a budding to Winter Valley. And that watershed feeds Pine Tree Brook. And it does so by the stream that goes down the middle of Wendell Park and discharges into Pine Tree Brook. The reason we're so concerned with that area as being a highly sensitive area is because some of the water in that stream has been deemed, has been tested, and it is contaminated with high levels of E. coli. The reason the town knows that is the town was an applicant about five years ago, four and a half to five years ago, when the town received a state grant to put in tree filters on Wendell Park. The purpose of the tree filters was to take the discharge, the street discharge, the surface water and clean it. Great idea, and it was that we had state funding to do it. Conservation Commission approved it. But at that time, we looked at whether or not that will improve the quality of water in that stream that discharges into Pine Tree Brook. And the answer is no, it won't. Because it was just treating the street runoff. So we asked the town to go back and look at where, where the testing had been done that showed the contamination. And it was on the other side of Canton Avenue, which would be the east side, I guess. And to that extent, it was, it seemed a great target to improve the water quality in that area. And that's exactly in the area where the town owns the lot that we anticipate there'll be a proposed to replicate wetlands. And just in terms of basic terms, Wetlands Act is a big sponge. And the sponge actually filters the contaminants that are present in that area. And that would be a great service to the town. It would be a great improvement as to the quality of water discharging into Pine Tree Brook and once again discharging into the Ponce River. So in terms of, and I'm speaking only generically because we, again, we have not seen an application for a proposal. And I would not prejudge it in terms of whether or not we would approve it. But I will say that if replication is warranted, this is an appropriate area. During the sidewalk, we saw that there was significant erosion from a drainage discharge in that area. And that should be repaired anyway. And if we could repair that and at the same time create wetlands, create a sponge, create a filter and clean up the contaminants, I think the public would be benefiting. There may be some questions that, while I know that Ned Corcoran is going to address at this point, I, I think that we're just talking from an informational perspective. But I think we, the town may have an opportunity to do some good to the environment.
Thank you, John. And let's turn to Attorney Ned Corcoran, who's representing Winter Valley. After which we'll open the floor to discussions. Mr. Corcoran, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, members of the, of the board, if I could share a screen. I have a brief presentation that I can show that gives you a little more detail about what John was referring to. And also, if possible, if you could promote Sarah McLaren, who's the Executive Director of Winter Valley, and Devin Howe, who was the wetland scientist working with us on this project, that'd be great. Devin may, maybe have a reason to respond to a specific question, be helpful if he's available.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Thank you. If I can share a screen. Can you all see that?
Yes.
So, thank you again. If you, many of you might recall that in two thousand and twenty-one, town meeting approved an amendment to zoning to allow Winter Valley to expand to a sixth building. It's currently one of two nonprofit developments in the D-one zone, the other one being Home Inc. They are facilities that provide housing for seniors, those sixty-two and over and/or have disabilities. Winter Valley is a HUD-financed senior facility. All of its units are affordable. There are a hundred and sixty such units. Currently, the last building, Building Five, was built in the early nineteen nineties with thirty-two units. As I said, town meeting approved Article forty-eight in May of two thousand and twenty-one, which allows Winter Valley to build a new building with up to thirty-six affordable, additional affordable units. Requires two sets of permits, one from the Planning Board for Site Plan Approval and the second for the Order of Conditions from the Conservation Commission. We just learned in Sept-, at the end of September that HUD has opened up a new opportunity for funding. And that application has to be submitted by the third week of January. We understand from the HUD process that the, we have to tick, check all the boxes relative to local zoning and permitting, which means that we have a fairly short window of time to get plans and matters before both the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, as well as the select board. We'll start neighbor meetings probably next week, another says, week of November fourteen. We'll owe at least one neighbor meeting. And we expect to start hearings in mid to late, mid-November into December. Winter Valley is a campus that contains twenty-four acres. Its primary site entry is on Canton Avenue, approximate to Highland Street. There are five residential buildings and an administrative building in the middle, but Buildings One, Two, Three, Four, and Five, Building Five being the last one that was constructed in the early nineteen nineties. From a map perspective, again, entry in off of Canton Avenue, buildings layout as you come in, Building Five is to the rear. And this is significant additional area to, further to the rear that abuts the property of the Milton Hospital, which is recently approved for zoning for a memory care facility. And then some individual homes on Mergewood Road that are in the area approximate to where the six forty-eight, six fifty-two Canton Avenue forty-B process was undertaken. The area in question relative to this new building, Six, is going to be right here to the rear of Building Five. This is a plan that we showed at town meeting. It showed the location of this new Building Five in the rear of Building Six, approximate to a couple of neighbors here. We've, we've, and then the location of a wetland that is a substantial wetland and feeds intermittent stream that comes down to the hospital. We've since further wetland delineation and have reworked the location of that building to some degree. This is a, is a close-up of the area in question where the new building would be located. And when we just started some wetland delineation, other planning, we discovered that there is an isolated wetland containing about five thousand square feet that sits right where the new building Six wants to go. This is, this is a layout of Building Six sitting on top. You can see it faintly, sitting on top of the wetland. Parking area has been relocated from that earlier view to the other side of the building from the, those single-family dwellings on the other side. And we initially started discussions with the Conservation Commission a year or so ago. We thought about the notion of replicating this wetland. We know that we have to do that if we're going to impact that wetland. And we looked at a couple of options. The first was to expand this wetland further to the rear. The wetland that I showed you that, that serves that intermittent stream that goes into the hospital property here. And the second was to think about sort of turning it on its side and replicating it one to, you know, sort of a one-to-one basis, just to the rear of the new building with some landscape features designed to buffer that wetland from the building. We met with Steve Ives, who was the town's conservation agent. And he really put his, his thinking cap on and came, came to us with an alternative approach. And that was that rather than replicate in either one of these two areas, which would, which would require the removal of some significant trees and some other matter, that he thought a better approach would be to come down to the town-owned wetland that is right next to this main site entry to the property off of Canton Avenue. This is, let me just back up for a moment. This is approximately five acres. It was deeded to the town in nineteen seventy-one. It's under the, from what I can tell, it's under the jurisdiction of the, of the select board. Select board is the body that owns it. It was never deeded from there to the Conservation Commission so that the wetlands are jurisdictional to the Conservation Commission. You can't do anything there without approval of the commission. The commission does not otherwise own it. It is owned, from what I can tell, by the, by the select board. And the select board would have to approve some form of right-of-entry or a license to allow work to be done if, in fact, the Conservation Commission would approve such work through the, the process that we're beginning, begin to engage the commission in later this month. This next is an aerial taken from the town's website. I don't know why it, it comes out as red when you, when you download it. But this is the site drive. As John described, there is a, there is a culvert, sort of a, this is a rocky sort of stream, man-made stream feature that goes underneath the driveway and feeds into this wetland. Steve Ives' thought was this area really needs some work. Should be improved from a, from a, from a sponge perspective, as John described it. Enhance the wetland, clean up the way that the, that the drainage comes through here and is received. Have a better chance to catch any contaminants that might be in the, in the water before it gets into the wetland. And he proposed that we, we work with them to sort of create a replication plan that would expand the area of the wetland, clean up this access, the access point for the water coming into the wetland and go from there. We did have a sidewalk, as John mentioned, with the commission on September twenty-five. We showed preliminarily what the, what the thought process was. I think there was general receptiveness to that, subject to seeing the details. And we are working actively on getting those details done and filed. And the goal that we may be filing is early as, as Friday and a possibility that we would start a hearing on November fifteenth. So, as I said, Mr. Ives was very, very thoughtful, tremendous and long experience in this area. Really was the guy that came to us and said, I think I have a better idea. And we agreed. So we'll be moving forward, as I said, with, with hearings and process. We, we appreciate, obviously, your time this evening. We look forward to being back before you later this fall. At such point as we believe we'll have approval from the, from the Conservation Commission to go forward. And we'll be requesting that the board, that this board authorize the work that would need to be done under the, under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission with some form of either a license or right-of-entry and something that we can work out the details with, with Mr. Freitag, if and when the time comes. So with that, I'll pause. Thank you for your time. Open up to you for questions that you may have. And we look forward to being back with you in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran and Mr. Cannon. Was there anything that Sarah or Devin wanted to add at this point before we move ahead? I don't see any hands, so I'll assume that we'll turn it now to the select board for any questions that they may have of Chair Cannon or Attorney Corcoran. Ms. Busta, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just have a quick question for Kevin Freitag. If there are any issues with, with using this land, is this the right mechanism going through the select board for this? Just wanted to verify with him.
Mr. Freitag, you're recognized.
Can you hear me?
We can.
From everything that I've heard tonight, it appears this is the bottom court. Certainly happy to follow up a bit more after the meeting with John Kieran. Sounds like everything is on, the people don't have traffic.
Any other questions? Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, and thank you to the work that Winter Valley has done and also Mr. Ives. My question is perhaps for Mr. Keenan and Mr. Corcoran, but I think it may be more from Mr. Milano. And that is, is this something that the town's environmental coordinator and the town engineer should vet on behalf of the town, particularly if the select board needs to make a judgment on this?
Yeah, I would agree. I think this definitely a place for us to have a check-in with town staff as it makes its, once we get a formal application in through CONCOM. And happy to loop them in as, as we go through the process there.
Thank you.
There is a proposed motion. What is the desire of the select board with respect to that motion? Mr. Zolas.
Mr. Chair, I, I thought I understood Mr. Mr. Corcoran to suggest that they would be asking us to take action after the CONCOM took action and, and perhaps after the environmental coordinator and the staff has looked into this and maybe we've gotten some feedback from Mr. Freitag as well. But that's, that's what I took from it, but perhaps, perhaps I need.
And can I add for, Mr. Zolas, that this would be deferring this item to the subsequent, we need the select board. That's where I was going.
Yeah, I mean, in my view, as long as there's no downside to it, seems like we, we, this is, this is a very good introduction. But it seems like we, we need to vet it with town staff and, and to hear what the CONCOM's view is on it. And, and, and then, you know, based on that, it seems to me we'll, and also Mr. Freitag as well, as Roxanne asked for whether this is legally the right way. So it sounds like there's a little bit of homework that we need to do before we can take action on this.
Thank you. I sense no disagreement. So that will be the course that we'll follow. Mr. Milano will be pursuing the questions on the table, as will Attorney Freitag. And we may be able to entertain this on a subsequent agenda. I don't know if it'd be early enough for the fifteenth. But if not, certainly hopefully just after town meeting. So thank you all. Mr. Corcoran.
Yes, I, I didn't expect a motion or a vote on this this evening. It was, it was our purpose to introduce it. We knew we'd be coming back after we had formal process with the conservation commission and the planning board. So thank you for your time and we'll look forward to being back probably sometime early after, after Thanksgiving.
We thank you and Mr. Cannon, Devin and Sarah for being with us. Have a good evening.
You as well. Good night.
Thank you.
Item number five on our agenda is discussion approval, special town meeting scheduled for Monday, December five, two thousand and twenty-two. We have several motions to entertain with respect to item number five. The first motion would be to reopen the warrant for the special town meeting. Is there such a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, to reopen the warrant for a special town meeting.
A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zolas. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Zolas.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Relative to item number five, we also have a motion to approve the index in the greeting pages, which were in the materials for tonight's meeting. Is there such a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the indexing reading pages.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zolas. It has been moved to the second. Any comment? Seeing none, I have one. It's a small one, but at the end of the first paragraph in the greeting, it's just a small letter change from, it reads currently November one S R. And want that to be November one S T. November first. Thank you, Lynn, for catching up and doing that for us. Just to let you know that your hard work does get read. So we have a motion that's been seconded, fair discussion. Mrs. Zolas.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Next motion, and I'll take the liberty of reading it. It's moved to approve the additional special town meeting warrant articles, article five, amend the public education government access and cable-related fund appropriation. And article six, the public education government access and cable-related fund appropriation. Is there? I'll assume that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ms. Musto. And Mr. Milano, can we turn to you at this time, please?
Sure. So select board had a abbreviated meeting a couple of weeks ago to consider these two articles. The first one, article five, just as further background and a reminder, would amend the appropriation made at the twenty-twenty-two annual town meeting from the PEG cable fund. That was, an appropriation of six hundred thousand dollars was approved at the town meeting. But unfortunately, town had four hundred and forty-four nine oh one dollars in that account. And under state law, we can only appropriate the amount of money we have actually received as of the date of the vote of the town meeting. So as a housekeeping effort, we are looking to clean that up to amend the appropriation made at the annual town meeting by reducing that appropriation from the six hundred thousand dollars to four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars nine oh one. The second article, article six, would then appropriate one hundred and fifty-five thousand and ninety-nine dollars from this fund to get the appropriation back up to six hundred thousand dollars that was originally envisioned. These monies are received from cable companies and the money goes to Offerate Milton Access TV, which we all know is a great partner here in town. So we've received additional money since that June town meeting, which means we have the budget available to make the full appropriation as was originally envisioned and intended by the annual town meeting back in June. The warrant committee did take up these articles on their Friday night meeting, also a couple of weeks ago, and had voted to recommend them, assuming they are included in the warrant after the select board votes tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Are there any questions for our town administrator on these two articles? Seeing none. Yes, Mr. Zolas.
Mr. Jeff, I'm sorry if I, I can't remember. Are we approving these for inclusion in the warrant? Or are we approving the substance of the articles?
We are approving the articles for inclusion in the warrant as written and contained in the materials for the meeting.
Okay. So, so I'll just add that as maybe a friendly amendment to, after, after approve, move for improve, move to approve for inclusion in the warrant.
Thank you. So noted. Does the second agree?
Yes.
Thank you. With that done, roll call. Mr. Zolas.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle. Now, this process requires two more motions. So bear with us. The next one is a motion to close the warrant for the special town meeting instead of that moved. Is there a second?
I'll second, sure.
Thank you, Roxanne. Any discussion? Mr. Zolas.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle. And the final motion is to move to approve the warrant for the special town meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you, Roxanne. Seeing no discussion, Mr. Zolas.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number six, discussion approval, school project update with school building committee, including Gail Road and Fontbonn convent. We have Mr. Sean O'Rourke with us. If we do, could we move him up to a panelist? I don't see Sean. Yeah, here he is. Good. Thanks, Sean. Great to have you with us.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. How are you? My name's Sean O'Rourke. I'm the chair of the school building committee for the town of Milton. I live at twenty-seven Quarry Lane. I'm also a town meeting member precinct eight. If I may, Mr. Chair, I, I've got a short presentation. I'd just like to walk through some of the progress that we made so far.
Please do.
Okay. And just let me know when it comes through.
Three, um.
All right. So as, as the board is aware, the school building committee has identified a parcel along Gail Road as D six five six A that we've identified for the location of a new middle school. The parcel that's there is broken into multiple sub-parcels. But the parcel identified that we'd like to utilize for the school is sub-parcels C, which accumulates up to about six point eight acres. It, as, as the board is aware, we had identified the site and walked it with the state forester last spring, right before the Maytown meeting. And based on that, came up with an alternative that we pulled our article off for further study. And I want to give an update on kind of where we're at with that further study. As we walked it with the state forester, you know, he gave this, you know, vision of what the ecological value of the site looked like. As you're seeing here is, you know, a, a, a heat map of basically where the high value of that site is in the lower values. So the higher value is down by Blue Hills Parkway, the lower value is up by Brooksfield. As part of the concessions, as we started looking at it, as a, as a committee, we, we've offered a three-hundred-foot setback to remain as conservation land off Blue Hills Parkway, basically saving the majority of the ecologically valuable portion of that site. In order to do that, though, we're going to need to align, realign Gail Road. So the first steps that we've worked with BSC Group, who's been out there a little over the past couple of months, working on survey work was first was wetland delineation. So if you go out to the site today and walk the parcel where the yellow lines are, which is essentially a park parcel, you'll note flagging a long pine tree brook to delineate the wetlands. The reason we did that is to know the exact limitations of the resource area for the wetlands. And then essentially work with the surveyors to design a new alignment of Gail Road outside the resource area, but within the parcel for the parks. So additionally, the picture on the lower left are survey points that you'll see out there for topographical survey that was, has been accomplished. So a, as that road gets aligned, we'll have a better idea of how much of that parcel we can take. At this point, we don't have the final working documents from BSC Group. We're anticipating them hopefully in the next week or two. But the, the images here are just, you know, to, to, to highlight kind of what we're looking at. So depending on how much of that park parcel we can, we could take, there are certain setbacks that we're offering, looking at with Home Inc. Essentially, you know, if the parcel that on the parks portion or use my pointer, the portion up here is extremely small, we might have to be, you know, a budding Home Inc. with a zero buffer, a, a zero conservation buffer, but still a fifty-foot zoning buffer that would be built in. And again, we're offering as a second option, a fifty-foot zoning conservation buffer and then an additional setback, a fifty-foot zoning buffer. And again, that's based on how big of a parcel we can take on the parks land. A third option that we're looking at is a hundred-foot conservation buffer. And again, with the fifty-foot setback for zoning. And then the final one is a hundred and fifty-foot setback, again with the fifty-foot zoning buffer built in. So if you walk out to the site today, what you'll see for demarcation points in the site are stakes. And along those lines that I just highlighted, you can go out and actually see what those offsets would look like. The only one that, there's one additional one here that's in blue. I just didn't have a picture of it. But that would be a two-hundred-foot setback, which would be the hundred and fifty-foot conservation offset with fifty-foot zoning offset. So for us right now, the, the whole reasoning, we pulled the article back was this equation. What we're looking to do is utilize less of the conservation land by, you know, scaling it back. And then, you know, previously we had about eight point eight seven acres of land being converted in. And we're looking to add additional parcels to that, basically to create a larger ratio of conservation land being created against what's being taken out. One other thing to note too, the schools right now are at capacity. The facilities subcommittee for the school committee are currently exploring modular classrooms. So there, there's been talk about these at multiple meetings up till now, and those are, are in works that are being discussed. As an option, our committee was made aware late, I think, two weeks ago, right, right before we posted our, our agenda for our meeting last Monday of Fontbonn's rectory or being available. So we've gone out, looked at the site. The, the building is approximately forty-five thousand square feet. It sits on about three point five seven acres. There are wetlands that exist on the backside of it. It's in a residential A zoning district, so there are certain limitations on what we can do for it. And the cost of it right now to just purchase it as is, is about eight and a half million dollars. The site plan, as I, as I mentioned, again, three point five seven acres adjacent to Fontbonn. And as you can see on the backside of it, highlighting green are the existing wetlands that have been delineated. When we're looking at this, essentially as an option, either for replacement of, you know, the modulators that are being discussed or a permanent fix for what we're looking at, the, the educational program has to be defined. We're working with the school committee right now to kind of understand what the space is, what we could put in there. Based on the previous study by DRA in twenty nineteen, there was a study, there was an option for an early education center that consisted of twenty-six classrooms for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. Looking at this existing space, we'll definitely need to add on to this to make room for twenty-six classrooms. They would not fit within the existing building. So right now, our next meeting for the school building committee next Monday, we're, we're doing a deep dive into Fontbonn, you know, evaluating it. What we want to do is weigh, weigh the cost of acquisition, the renovation cost of the existing space, and then what type of addition we'll have to put on and the costs associated with that. The key thing to note, though, that this option, if we did an early education center here, does not address the middle school. So a, as a, as a committee, we'll have to look at that a little bit further to see what, what, what that poses as either options or hurdles. The floor plan, we were given this by the Realtor. I've looked at it initially. The wings that go out of the building are roughly forty-two feet. They're broken down into bedrooms for the nuns. They're roughly about eighteen feet long, six-foot hallway. So when we look at that and overlay essentially a typical kindergarten classroom, which is about twelve hundred square feet, and I use Tucker as it, which is probably the most representative school, you know, geometry-wise, to what the space looks like. Laying out a room in there, the, the classrooms wouldn't work with the existing walls that are there. So there's, you know, basically significant renovation that will have to happen on the interior of the building. Our next steps right now, as I said, we're doing a deep dive at our next meeting just to discuss the options of Fontbonn. And essentially what that means is an overall project or how it aligns with our overall project. And then further discussion, you know, the next two meetings to look at Fontbonn and also the results for the survey that I talked about before. The, our goal is hopefully in the beginning of December is to have the survey results done and, and define a vote for what parcel land we're looking at. After that, it would be running through the meetings for conservation commission, parks department, select board and warrant committee. Um, we are going to engage the neighbors as we make that decision on what parcel we want. So we'll be meeting with Home Inc. We'll be meeting with Pine Tree Brook. And with that, I'll open up to any questions.
Thank you, Sean. Questions for Mr. O'Rourke, comments, the members of the board, please. Ms. Busta.
Thank you. Uh, Sean, thank you for the presentation. Just wondering, um, when you're looking at Font Bon, are you looking at all different options, whether it be moving, say, administration there with some component of either preschool or K or, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that you're covering all the different options and scenarios possible. Thank you.
Yep, a- and so w- we are. So we're essentially working with the school, school board to understand exactly what what we have for space and programmatically what we could fit in it. So we're we're not just looking strictly at kindergarten and pre-K, but, you know, what space we can open up in the existing district schools, facilities, and then basically how that aligns with the overall overcrowding that we're facing within the schools.
Thank you.
So I may, Sean, um, in brief, um, if the font bond, a potential font bond option would eliminate the need for portables if approved to be successful, and then there would still be the middle school uh, that would be needed by the educational community in the town. Is that a fair?
It is. And and one other option that, uh, that we did look at last week is rental property uh, with Reebok's facility down in Canton. They have a daycare program, uh, that was there. And we toured the site last week as as a rental option. It's an existing daycare, so the fit out of that would be minor. Um, but we're still investigating that one also. Uh, so that's one other option, uh, that it's kind of posed itself within the last week also.
Is there any preliminary estimate of what the cost of portables would be that would meet the needs for the overcrowding?
Difficult question. Uh, the the, so the the options that were looked at for portables that were there, uh, I know the school committee principal and and the principals have met on it. Um, the layout of the portables or the number of them wouldn't address all of the overcrowding. Uh, so similarly, what I was talking about Font Bon, they're trying to figure out educational-wise, what programs would go into the modulators. And i- 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 it 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 didn't. It, there wasn't a a distinct answer that, um, those modulators would address all the overcrowding. It would, it would be a portion of it, but not everything. The costs associated with the options that were presented were roughly seven to eight million dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So so I think, um, I think, Arthur, you put your finger on, uh, the the balance here, which is, you know, if this is a viable solution and allows us to save millions of dollars in trailer education, because we can do it faster than building a building, rehab, presumably rehab, rehabbing would be faster than building. Um, and if that cost, even though we would have to pay for the land, if that cost of rehabbing a building would be less than building a building. So so in my view, the balance here is the cost of time and the cost of building, um, versus, um, you know, the additional costs of the trailers, uh, millions of dollars of trailers, and the additional time that it would take to build a building. And to me, that's where the 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 balance of this, uh, that's where that, that's where that plays out.
And that doesn't factor in the educational costs. And by that, I mean, um, what it is that gets sacrificed by youngsters who have to be put in, um, overcrowded situations and portable classrooms and things of that nature, which um, aren't necessarily, uh, what we as Milton want to have. Uh, Aaron, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, good evening, Sean. What a massive amount of work you and the committee have done, and I just want to say thank you um, for all of this information you provided this evening. I have one quick question about the middle school piece of this. Um, I recall, and and I might be wrong, but I I might be smushing things together. But I recall at one point, we had talked about possibly building on to Pierce, um, to accommodate another class, like another whole other class. Um, if we do go ahead with this font bond, which, you know, talk about something that fell from the sky wonderfully, um, because I love this idea of moving kids there instead of having them in trailers because that's a whole other can of worms. But I wonder if there's a possibility for us to have, um, i- if you guys are looking at what to do with the middle school concerns and whether or not that building, building on to Pierce was a possibility.
Yeah, thank you. So that 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 option that you're talking about was part of that space study the DRA did. They did look at putting an addition on the backside of Pierce Middle School, uh, for additional space. Uh, and we're trying to resurrect that, to understand what the programmatic portion of that was. Um, uh, you know, so wh- what we're trying to do is weigh the option of font bond, the renovation, the the additions cost that will be there along with the acquisitions, along with whatever middle school, uh, construction would have to do and summarize all that, and then weigh that against a, uh, you know, the the land swap and the potential construction of a new school um, that we know addresses all grade levels all the way down. So, um, there's a financial balance that we're looking at comparing the two, and then also the educational balance for what programs we're looking at for each one.
Right. Well, thank you for that. And as everyone reminds me on a constant basis, there is no more land being created. There's only a certain amount of land, and so anytime that the town can pick up more of that, um, I'm I'm for it. And, um, making sure that our kids get the education that they need. So thank you. And thanks to your whole committee for all this work for all these years. I really do appreciate it, Sean.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Sean, you have outlined several, um, important meetings that the School Building Committee has, um, coming up. Do you have any sense of, uh, direction at this time as to what you would want from the Select Board with respect to that calendar?
At at this point, I, you know, for me, I'm still, I I'm I'm mentally, I've been thinking about this and, you know, trying to, I I I I see them as parallel paths that I want to, you know, go after um, and engage. So, you know, in regards to the land swap, our goal is to get um, the documentation back from BSC Group within the next week or two, present it, discuss it with our, with our committee, uh, and then potentially have a vote on it in early December. Um, so along those timelines, you know, there has been discussion and, you know, we we have it on the the agenda tonight for a special town meeting in February for that. Um, that would be one thing that I'd still like to pursue. And then alternatively, you know, we're looking at Font Bon. Again, our committee was just made aware of it the Friday before our our meeting, so we didn't really have much time to prep. Um, we're trying to go on a sidewalk of it tomorrow night, and then, like I said, do a deep dive into it, um, next Monday. I mean, we're leveraging. The good thing is, on on our committee, Glenn Hoffman, who's a local architect, uh, just converted Saint Bridget's over in South Boston uh, convent into a daycare. So he has hands-on recent experience of construction cost and design for this. Um, so we definitely want him to weigh in on some of this stuff. Uh, so on that other side of that parallel path that I was talking about, you know, we're going to be working uh, towards defining what that educational program would be within there, along with, you know, estimated costs that we could, you know, have a little more uh, detailed discussion on.
Um, this, Mr. Milano, uh, recognizing, um, mention of a special February town meeting. Could you outline what the required calendar would be for that? For everybody, please. I know it was sent around, but it would be good to, um, review that. If you could, please.
Sure. So we just marked up a quick, rough, um, draft of what the timeline could look like, um, assuming that we stick for the town rather sticks with that last Monday in February that we've used a couple of times for a special town meeting. Um, that would require, not require, but I think looking at the Sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up so I can share it. So just looking at the steps that we need to go through, um, if the Select Board were to schedule a special town meeting for that Monday, we'd be looking at closing the warrant, um, right away after the New Year's in January to give the warrant committee the time that they need to react to and and make a recommendation on the articles. So they would have about a month, um, till the warrant needed to go to the printer. Um, so it's, it's certainly, um, it's a small timeframe, but I I know that Sean's been before them a couple of times already and kept them up to date as we go, as we, as he's been going through different pieces. But, um, this is just what a rough timeline would look like now, just to put into kind of context of what what would be required to to get everything lined up for that February date.
It's very helpful. Thank you. So it appears the question on the table is, um, whether or not we, what the Select Board's perspective or opinion is with respect to the possibility of a late February special town meeting for the purposes of the School Building Committee needs. Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, it seems to me that it would be prudent to, uh, to schedule something, the School Building Committee. Um, we hope will have something ripe to be decided, whether it be land swap or whether it be appropriating funds, uh, for the purchase of property. Uh, but it seems to me that, uh, moving, um, with some swiftness here uh, is in the benefit of the town, because, um, the more we wait, um, the more millions of dollars we're going to be paying for trailers. And so it seems to me, um, it seems to me that the School Building Committee Committee will have something for town meeting to decide in February, and should, and we should move forward with making that decision to see if we can, see if we can, um, do something that's a little more cost-effective here and educationally more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Bradley, you had your hand up just immediately after Mr. Zulus.
I did, Mr. Chair. I am, I took my hand down because Vice Chair Zulus said everything I was going to say, so I don't want to waste any more time.
Um, Mike, is, uh, what you're proposing, uh, something that would be in the form of, um, a motion, or would it be too premature at this time?
You know, I I I, um, you know, and since we're talking about setting a town meeting, I I don't know that there's any downside to waiting until, um, until the next meeting, um, so all the members can weigh in, since we don't have to advertise the warrants until December eighth. Uh, seems to me that that will give the members time to think about it and get all the members the opportunity to weigh in. Unless, unless Nick tells us that there's some downside to waiting until the fifteenth, um, you know, it seems to me that might be, might be a better way to go.
I don't, uh, based on our calendar, I didn't think that that would be, um, moving it up in February would be problematic from our perspective, but, um, with this date, I think we still have that two weeks of room to to maneuver.
So essentially, you'd be okay with a motion tonight?
Or waiting, because I would be okay with waiting till the fifteenth.
Good. Okay, you'd be okay on the fifteenth. All right. That's what I wanted to clarify, and I appreciate that very much. So, um, we will have this on the agenda again for our meeting on the, uh, fifteen. And, um, Sean, you will have had at least one important meeting between now and then, and we'll be sure to have you on the agenda for our our meeting on the fifteenth of November.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. We appreciate all of the time that you provide us. Have a good night, Sean. And now we arrive at item number seven, which is, uh, is based discussion approval, Mass DOT Design Public Hearing, the Route twenty-eight at Chican Tarbat Road Intersection Improvement Project, held on October twenty-seven. Uh, a Select Board comment letter to Mass DOT. Uh, Roxanne and Mike and I were able to be at the meeting as, um, you heard uh, Paul Hogan and, um, it was also indicated during that meeting that, uh, Senator Timmeltie had organized a very important meeting uh, that included that particular site. Uh, Mr. Zulus was there, as was I. Uh, Senator Timmeltie had in the, uh, State Secretary of Transportation. And, um, in the order in which you both spoke at the meeting on the twenty-seventh, Roxanne, could I first turn to you, please?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I wanted to say that I, you know, I attended the meeting along with my fellow board members. I listened last Thursday evening to the DOT meeting regarding the Route twenty-eight and Chican Tarbat Road Intersection Project um, for proposed roundabout at that location. I have some serious concerns about this proposal. Um, when there's a petition of greater than seven hundred, uh, residents opposing this and, um, greater than a hundred people were on that call, uh, local residents expressing their concerns in the DOT meeting, I think we need to listen really carefully to that. I wanted to thank the residents that spoke tonight as well. The Select Board needs to represent our residents and their concerns, and I'd like to thank all of the residents for coming tonight and for expressing their concerns at that meeting. Um, Director Butters expressed some serious concerns about exiting their driveways and side streets in traffic congestion with this plan. The DOT itself said in quotes, "Traffic will utilize hillside as an alternate route," end of quote. This roundabout will be done, they said, in two construction periods, uh, seasons, actually, and, uh, that's a concern, too. That's a long time for this, a lot of impact to our town and to residents, and that'll be a big traffic nightmare, and the burden will go to the surrounding roadways. When asked about a left-hand turn signal, as many residents did ask, they refused to bend from their roundabout scenario, which I believe that in itself should raise concerns. When re- when questioned about the Route twenty-eight speed and safety concerns, they said in quotes, "It's an outs- it's outside the scope of the project." I also would question bike safety. I believe that when you're in a vehicle entering a roundabout, your focus is on the cardio left side of you, and when you're entering the road about, you're not focused on what is on the right-hand side of you, and that's a real serious concern for bikes entering a roundabout. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, a previous speaker had mentioned that there was a proposal for a left-hand turn signalization there in two thousand and five, and that also involved flattening of the hill coming into that intersection. This appears to be a very good solution. I think we should explore the best plan possible for the safety concerns and traffic concerns on Route twenty-eight. Their plan also would push issues with accidents further down Route twenty-eight. So although they think they may be doing something at that location, it just pushes it further down to more accidents and speed further down on twenty-eight. So what I'm asking is that my fellow Select Board members agree to send a letter to the DOT opposing this roundabout plan and asking them to further explore the left-hand turn signalization at that location. Thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne. Uh, Mike, can we turn to you?
Um, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, uh, each of the, uh, those who participated in public comment this evening uh, made good points. Um, first, uh, uh, Mr. Hogan, not in any particular order, but first, Mr. Hogan uh, mentioned that, uh, the DOT had talked about a partnership with the Town of Milton through the Select Board. Uh, you know, as I mentioned on Thursday night, um, this Town of Milton through the Select Board has never endorsed this project, at least as long as I've been here, and that's about four and a half years. Um, the Town of Milton beyond that one meeting, when it was presented to us three years ago, has not been consulted on this project through the Select Board. Uh, and so to suggest that the Select Board or the Town of Milton through the Select Board has been a partner in this process is more than an exaggeration. Um, and that should change going forward, and it needs to change. Now, um, we have the opportunity, as Roxanne mentioned, to 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 make comments. Um, and And I think we should, I think we should find out, I don't remember the timeframe, I think it's a pretty tight timeframe to get comments in. So that may require a short meeting, we can maybe Nick, while I'm talking, maybe you can double check what the timeframe is to get a comment letter in. But I think we should send a comment letter in. Broadly speaking, you know, with respect to some of the commenters, you know, Mr. Rowe mentioned the left-hand turn as Roxanne did, I think that's something that needs to be explored. One of the comment, one of the public commenters, Ms. Spring, mentioned the flattening, as did Roxanne. That was a proposal some years ago, and that seems to have fallen by the wayside. And, and Mr. Costello also mentioned the left-hand turn. And Mr. Juhening, I think, was right when he said that it appears that the DOT hasn't listened. Because we did have meetings, a meeting three years ago. And nothing seems to have changed. And I think, you know, it's hard to conclude. Anything other than what Mr. Limcula concluded, which was that this was nothing, little more than a check-the-box meeting. And so I think our comments have to be pointed. I'm not a traffic expert. I don't presume to be a traffic expert. But it seems, there's a few things that seem clear. One is, there needs to be more community input here because it hasn't been. Accepted by the Mass DOT. And the community means the residents and also the town acting through the Select Board. So I think our comments should reflect the need for community input, both from the residents. And from, and through the Select Board speaking on behalf of the town. Two, there, as was pointed out by some of the commenters. There hasn't been a, a, an analysis, the impact of this downstream on Route 28. That hasn't been done. And that's needed. And that's something that we should, we should require. I mean, we can't require it because we don't, but it's something that we should, we should, we should, we should. Seek on behalf of the town. Because it was clear from this meeting that the, as I think Roxanne pointed out, and some of the commenters pointed out. That the DOT is looking solely at this intersection without looking at what's going on before it and what's going on after it. And what they have taken, it seems to me, from their examples of roundabouts and other parts of the state. It appears to a jaundiced eye that this is a kind of cookie cutter, one-size-fits-all approach. And as many of the speakers on Thursday night pointed out. The level of traffic and, and the hill and, and the, many of the unique characteristics. Make this a very unique situation that may not call for a roundabout. The DOT has, was clear from the presentation that the big problem here in terms of safety is those left-hand turns. So to the extent that we can solve the left-hand turns with a lane, to the extent we can flatten. The approach to make it safer, that might be a better alternative. So it seems to me we need to, we need to. We need to advocate for the community input. We need to advocate for the, the, the impact analysis. And also, and thirdly, I think we need to push for an interim solution because even if they do it the way they intend to do it now. We're talking about 24 months, and we can't wait that long. And so there needs to be some kind of interim solution, whether, whether, you know, we talked about in the meeting, whether it be some geometric spacing. Or whether we can do something with the shorthand, left-hand, the left-hand turns in the interim. There needs to be something in the interim in order to create some more safety. So those would be the three points that I would include in the comment letter. The community input, the need for the impact analysis and, and, and the need for. The need for an interim solution.
Without being repetitive, I'll just add a couple of things. And introduce them by, again, thanking everybody who's been involved. Both in the meeting on the 27th and in comments tonight, you provided a wealth of. Of input that can be incorporated into a communication. My notes from that meeting indicate that comments are due within 10 days. So we have a tight timeline from the meeting that was held on the 27th. And two points that I want to make, that it was stated, the project has approved to be moving forward. We want to keep that in mind. And then there was a reference to a 2019 Select Board meeting with Mass DOT. And I mentioned that to Nick, when Lennon others was able to get that meeting from Milton Access TV, I watched that today. And it was made very, very clear by one of the DOT presenters. That. Card align behavior is not likely to change. And that was one of the major issues before by the speakers. They want. Changing behavior from essentially 128 through to Erbeet Steel Road. If not actually beyond. So the next step is to see whether or not we have consensus on providing a letter. And then framing that letter if there is such a consensus. What is the pleasure of the board? And Mr. Freitag, you are recognized, sir.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add. Just to remind the select board, there's actually.
You're breaking up, Kevin?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Much better.
There's special legislation the town submitted back in 2019 to affect the speeding on Randolph Ave. Near the University of Chiquita Robert. That legislation has been pending for some three years, especially in front of the ladies and gentlemen now, as of early in this month. I just wanted to flag that because there might be something that the Select Board wants to incorporate or consider in the larger.
Thank you. You have an audience with you, Kevin. Any response to Kevin's comments? So what is the pleasure of the board? Yes, Ms. Bradley.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Even though I wasn't at the meeting, I still have an opinion about the letter and what was presented here. By our residents this evening. So I'm just gonna take a quick second and speak on that. I'm 100% in favor of the letter. I think we should be as pointed as we want to be. I have zero faith that it is going to make an impact. And I say that based off of the letter that we just received from the MBTA, basically telling us to go screw about our wanting these stairs re-done. So I just want the residents of Milton to understand that while we will take a hard stand and we will write a very pointed letter and there's legislation. Sitting in ways and means, so please call Timmeltie's office and let him know that you want that legislation removed. I just want you all to know that it is not our road. And while we will do everything in our power to try and change it and, and work with it and make it so that it's actually working for folks. There's no guarantee. It's not our final decision. It's Mass DOT's final decision. And if they're already saying that the project has been approved and is in process, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be Pollyanna tonight. But I do not believe that our letter is going to move the needle at all with that. And I am very sorry to say that, but that's given. Kind of just the response that we've received in the past from folks. I would hope that they would listen to us. I would hope that they would do studies. But I just want the residents to be aware that it's not in our, it's not in our lap to make this decision on the board. There were two other items that I just wanted to briefly say. One, I know that the DOT is putting roaderies in all over the state. And it's to divert people from using heavily traveled roadways. I recently had to drive to Reedville, and I can't remember that Reedville. Willholden, and another town for soccer. And there must have been 25 roaderies, roundabouts that I went through on my way there. So this is not, this is what they're doing, it seems like. To try and reduce that, that traffic congestion. So I understand it because if you're backed up in traffic, you're not gonna want to sit there waiting for a roundabout. I have to do it JP all the time and it's ridiculous, but I do it. So maybe that'll get some of the people off of our roads, who knows? And just as a little side note, I grew up on a street that was right next to a rotary. We had to use the rotary to get home every day, multiple times a day. Granted, it was western Mass, and there's not as much traffic out there, but it was something that we just got used to. And it was there before I was born, so there was nothing, nothing that we could do about that. So. I'm all for a letter. I'm all for as pointed as we can be, Mr. Zulus. But I just want everybody to be realistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Ms. Busta?
Thank you. As I said earlier, I am also in favor of a letter. I feel that we should also send that letter. In correspond with Rep. Driscoll and Senator Timmeltie to let them know that this is how we feel about it as they represent our town. And hopefully they can help with this. And, you know, ultimately, we don't know what will be, but I think that. It would be good to have their support along with, you know, our letter going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we're all four of us in support of a letter. So it's a matter of coordinating some time, the comments, and crafting. The very pointed communication that we want received by the Mass Department of Transportation. And the other eyes that we want to be seeing that communication. So maybe a next step might be to coordinate Nick. And see what we can get for time. We have a treasure trove of common possibilities from this discussion. From the public's comments during open session this evening, public comment this evening, and from the meeting itself. Is that something that might be feasible because we want to meet the timetable?
Yes, and for clarity, so it's a 10 business day timetable from the date of the public hearing. And that's for any comments to be included as part of the hearing record. But it is not necessarily a deadline on all public comments, so I think, you know, in a perfect world, we would get it in within that 10 business days. So this letter is part of the true public hearing record, but it wouldn't. Eliminate sending it, you know, on the night of the 15th. And obviously posting it to the website and other places so that folks are aware that it was submitted. So just in terms of. How we want to navigate the next steps, I can certainly take a stab at drafting something based on these comments. And everything that we received and share it and go from there.
Do we, do we need a motion to the effect that the Select Board will respond in writing? Mike?
Yeah, I don't know that we need a motion. It seems like we all agree we're gonna. Yeah, I think the bigger question is, do we want to have a meeting before the 15th in order to make this part of the public record? And I, you know, I would favor that.
And Erin?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted a friendly amendment to what Roxanne said earlier. I would also want us to include Representative Faulkner Oakley in that, that letter. Because she does represent folks that are zooming right into her part of our lovely Milton. So if we could just add her, that would be awesome.
Thanks, Erin.
Okay, good. So we have our marching orders, we have a consensus to move forward. And Nick's gonna start the ball rolling and call upon us as needed. If you could give us, Nick, a calculation of the date by which we want to get that out early. And then a potential time for a follow-up like Mike suggested where, you both were agreeing that we need to. Put our heads together at some point in time.
Yep, I will do that. We'll pick a day for next week. By my math, it gets us to next Friday of 10 business days. But I'll just confirm that I have that right and we'll coordinate on a, on a meeting after and draft a letter as well.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for a very, very important and rich discussion. We'll move on to our agenda, item number eight, which is discussion approval, review of application for sign-free corridors in the town of Milton, Massachusetts. And we'll turn to Kevin Freitag. Kevin?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
If you can.
Yeah, so. The board has before it the completed application in the town of Milton seeking the Mass DOT. Designated new areas within the town of Milton, assigned free corridors. The specific areas are business districts that are located in Milton, Earth District, East Milton Square District, Milton Village slash Central Ave District. And the Granite Ave Business District. And this application is one which if approved by Mass DOT would prevent the installation. Of billboards in any of those three areas. The genesis of this application came as a result of a request for a billboard that they've made. About the property located at the Grand Ave Business District. That application was ultimately denied by the Select Board because the Select Board thought that it was proven to seek. Determination from Mass DOT that all three of the business districts in the town be designated as sign-free corridors. And what essentially that would do is to start bylaws in Milton prohibit signs from all areas in town. Typically, billboards anywhere in town except for the business district. This would make it so that there would essentially not be a possibility for. Billboards to be placed anywhere in Milton. The application took quite a while to come together, but we relied quite heavily on the office of. Development, Ken Veresky. He was able to provide quite a bit of information regarding each one of these districts and historical, architectural, environmental. Some of the things that each one of these areas have. And was really able to give us the material that we needed to make a, what I think is a really compelling place for Mass DOT. That each of these areas have new qualities that are entitled to be protected against the installation of. Electronic or even non-electronic billboard. Frankly, it's not even just the areas themselves, some of it. Things like the Granite Ave Business is the, it's the surrounding areas. You have. The pond river that's right there, you have PCR properties that are facing to that area. There was really quite a bit to say. The application is over 200, I think it's 200,000 pages. And it really is three separate applications in one because it's for each one of these three properties. The process from here on out will be to submit this, if this is approved by the board, will be to submit this to Mass DOT. And my understanding is that Mass DOT then will coordinate a public hearing. At which time it will take up the application and give input from the public regarding the application and then we make the decision. For any questions, we will have them on happening this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Please extend compliments to all the hands who put together that very comprehensive package. It is quite impressive. Questions for Mr. Freitag or comments on the application? Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the application for sign-free corridors for the town of Milton, Massachusetts.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Just a second. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Is it all called vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Ms. Busta?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you very kindly, Kevin. Don't go too far away. Item number nine, discussion approval, declaration of property available and restrictions for disposition. General access easement over a parcel of land, practically shown as access road town of Milton. Way wide on a plan entitled Plan of Land Access Road, Milton, Massachusetts. Dated August 26, 2022, prepared by Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors. This the. Alina. Hello, and Mr. Freitag, can we turn to the two of you on this one, please?
I can go first, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So this is part of.
So this is part of, um, part and parcel of the article that is on the special town meeting warrant for December relative to granting an easement to the development that's taken place just off of Randolph Ave. According to the procurement laws in Massachusetts, the select board having control over the acquisition and disposition of real property in the town of Milton must, before it gives away, uh, ourselves, any property rights, whether it be, it be simple, like selling the property completely, or a portion of the property rights, which in this case is set at, uh, an ease in general access. The select board first has to vote to declare that that piece of property is available. The vote here is pretty narrowly tailored because we wanted to be quite specific and fit exactly what the easement, in this case, might say if town meeting doesn't act approved and authorize the select board to grant this easement. So again, all, all this review is, if, if the first is set at that, the threshold or a first step that has to happen in order for, um, the parcel to be, um, made, at least insofar as easement rights in the parcel, to be made available to, um, to be disposed by the town, uh, such as to approval by town meeting board to give a special town view.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Mr. Milano, any comments that you want to add, please?
Uh, Kevin covered it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, members of the board? I will then read the proposed motion. Move that the select board declare that a general access easement over a parcel of land approximately shown as access road town of Milton, forty foot wide, on a plan entitled Plan of Land Access Road, Milton, Massachusetts, is available for disposition, and that the use of this easement shall be to provide access to and from the parcel known as Assessor's Parcel ID one dash thirty-eight D dash four on the town of Milton's Assessors Maps, also known as seven twenty-eight Randolph Avenue. The use of this easement shall be limited to all means of access reasonably necessary for the use and benefit of this specific parcel. This easement shall terminate if and when the access road is accepted as public way. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Um, Mr. Zulus by roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. And, uh, Nick, thank, uh, Tim and others who, uh, worked with you and Kevin on this. Uh, number ten is the discussion, the select board retreat. We want to sort of keep this in our eyes. Uh, retreats, uh, aren't held to be something in the past, but rather organically moving forward. And, um, we'll be working and getting back to you with, um, the, the strategic framework for the retreat from the work that was conducted that day. And part of that is, um, our finalizing the calls and objectives for our new town administrator. And Nick is working on that at the present time. We had this article on the side of on the agenda, rather, for an update on that. Any comments that you want to add, Nick, or?
No, same for me at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move to item number eleven, committee appointments. And we have, uh, three committee appointments to be made. The Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and that everybody has received materials on these. So we have a motion. Does anybody choose to move the motion from the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee? Um, Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we, um, make a motion, I just wanted to say once again that I'm not sure that these are all the people that have applied to this position. The way that this is handled now is we get one email individually with every single person's resume who applies for things. I don't have a list in front of me of everybody that applied to be on these committees. Until Roxanne and I are done with our, um, our boards and committees overhaul, and there is an actual standardized process that all committees have to follow, I do not feel that it is in our interest to appoint to things that are not, um, that are not mandated by, um, state or bylaws. Um, so I will be abstaining from appointing anybody to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, um, at this point in time, because I do not believe that I, I have all the information I need to make this firm.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if this could be tabled for our next meeting? And, um, maybe we could have a chance to get all of the information, although it wasn't in a packet, all of their resumes, but, um, I, I'm just wondering if, you know, if we should just table it for the next meeting if we have a full board and gives us a chance to really look at this, look at all the different people that are already applied. I haven't, honestly, I haven't had a chance to really delve into it that much. Um, you know, given the short timetable with a lot of things going on here. So I, I, I would be in favor of doing it at the next meeting and have Lynn resend them out if that's possible, and just resend an email with just all of those, you know, resumes or, you know, applications for us. I mean, it sounds like that might be a good person, but I just, I need the information. I need more time to look at it. That's what I would say. If we can just do it at the next meeting, it might be a better option.
Ms. Bradley?
Is there a possibility for us to get a spreadsheet or some simple document that lists how many open positions there are, who's currently on this board, what the recommendation of the board is for, for the committee members? Is it possible for us to actually get this in a condensed manner so that when we're flipping through all these resumes, we kind of know what precincts are currently represented, what precincts are impacted the most by the airplane noise? And there's just a lot of things here that I don't have enough, I, I still, I just don't have enough information. I'm with Roxanne. I'm postponing it a week or two weeks. If it, and I, you ask Nick, is it possible for us to get some more information about this?
We provided the applications that we had received, um, and that were considered by the Airplane Noise Advisor Committee. So I, if, if there's a sense that somebody was missed, that's on us, but this was everybody that we had on our files, and I'm not sure.
Okay.
If that's coming from somewhere, so I, if we miss somebody, we apologize, but this is the list that we have received and have copies of in our files and our folder. So that's everybody that was listed out, that was discussed at the August twenty-third select board meeting was. This list would be provided to ANAC. They would make a recommendation, but the full list would be included on this agenda for a discussion and appointment by the select board.
Right, so I went to the, I went to the appointment, I went to the boards and committees website page, and it doesn't say how many people are supposed to be on that committee. It doesn't say how many openings there currently are. So that's why, are we only making one appointment? Are we making six appointments? I don't, I don't have enough parameters here.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, it's a five-member committee, but we can resubmit a packet with, with that information that you're, you're requesting for certain.
And adding the precinct information, Nick, that was mentioned to clear. Great. Ms. Musto?
Um, I was just going to say, I, the one thing I was wondering is, I know there was some mention that there is another resignation on there, so I'm wondering if it would be best to, um, look at the list and have a second name as well that we're thinking of, and then just do both appointments at the same time based on who submitted, instead of sort of piecemealing it, doing somebody today and somebody at some subsequent point. Um, maybe it would be best to do the appointments together of two new members and do that, um, at the next meeting based on our resumes or, you know, what we have in, in here. Could we?
Get to the chair of the committee with that, Mr. Milano?
I was just gonna add that, that resignation, we got notice of today, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but yes, I, there would be, um, uh, two appointments that would be necessary to get up to the full complement of the committee's five, um, as it was, um, created, but we can, um, like I said, just repackage all the information for you folks for the next meeting.
Great.
I think it might.
Ms. Musto?
Sorry. I think it might only make sense just so that we can do the two together, you know, and, um, instead of piecemealing it, like I said, doing one tonight and then one in like two weeks, I'd rather just do it once. Especially knowing that there's now another, like, there's two openings. I'd rather do that.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Zulus, are you comfortable with the approach this being?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, I, I understand if people want more time and they want to, want to look through the materials more. I, I'm certainly want to, want to extend that. I mean, I, um, we did appoint, uh, I believe it was three over the summer. I get to the four. Um, and then we asked ANAC to recommend, uh, a, a fifth, and they have. Um, and now, as Nick said, apparently we have someone who has resigned today. So, so as long as we can, you know, I recall that this committee was, um, asking for help, uh, in the summer. So as long as we, we provide the help to them within a reasonable period of time, seems to me two weeks is probably a reasonable period of time. As long as we give them the help they need, you know, I think that's, I think that's perfectly fine. And I think, you know, obviously, if people want to take that time and need the time, we should, uh, we should give it to them.
Great, and, um, down to administrator, and I can touch bases with the chair of the Airplane Noise Advisor Committee, and, um, move forward in the direction that we've agreed to. Thank you. That turns us to a second committee appointment, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And you will recall that, um, two appointments were made following, uh, a joint meeting of the planning board and the select board. Uh, one of those appointees, uh, decided to, uh, not accept, uh, to resign from the appointment, resulting in a vacancy, and the Master Plan Implementation Committee, uh, met recently, uh, and put forward, uh, three names for consideration with a recommendation for appointment. His, and the names are Warren Lazio, Demetrius Jim Davis, and Jonathan Lashley. What is the pleasure of the board? Ms. Bradley?
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. I'm sorry, because I, I don't want to be confused. Are we appoint, are we selecting one person to, to try and match up with the planning board? Or are we picking, um, all three of these?
These are the three that were put forward that were in our packets. A lot of a letter from the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee recommending one of these three for appointment.
So we are just doing one. I just want to make sure that it's clear. We're only doing one. Thank you so much.
Good point. Thank you. Ms. Musto?
Yes, um, I was gonna put a, um, a motion forward.
Please.
Motion if we're ready for that. Um, move to accept the rec, move to accept the recommendation of the Master Plan Implementation Committee and appoint Warren Lazio to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a term of one year.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all call vote. Uh, Mr. Zulus, do you want to?
I, I just want to thank all, you know, the, the, the mass, the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee pointed out that, um, this was a tough decision. These are three very well-qualified candidates. Uh, they each bring different strengths, uh, and they all are very strong, very strong candidates. Um, but, uh, ultimately, they, they voted to recommend Mr. Lazio. So I, so I just want to thank again all the candidates and, and, you know, in some respects, despite our best, best efforts, we're getting great applications for, uh, people to, to appear on committees. And, um, and so, so I hope that continues because, uh, because these are, these are three very good candidates. So anyway, just want to say that.
Well, well said, uh, and appropriate recognition to all. And, uh, you always want to have everybody keep in mind that if they're not selected at a particular point in time, that doesn't mean that they shouldn't, uh, keep maintaining their interest in serving on a, uh, a committee at some future date. So we have, uh, a motion and a second. Um, Mr. Zulus, all call?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And our third appointment is the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and that nominee is Amy Dexter. There's the Director of Finance for the town of, of town. Um, is there a motion to appoint Ms. Dexter?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Um, I'll move to appoint Amy Dexter to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a term of one year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Okay, we'll do the roll call. Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Sometimes it gets to be like horseshoes, so close ringers and leaners. But thank you all for your participation. We now move to item number twelve, discussion approval, one-day liquor licenses. And we have two. Does somebody wish to, uh, read the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the following one-day liquor license for the Milton Art Center, Friday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-two, six P M. to nine P M. gallery reception for the E, Eter. I hope I pronounced it correctly, Eter Family Artists. And Friday, December second, two thousand twenty-two, six P M. to ten P M. for holiday count, holiday concert Milton musicians.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto.
This is why I don't talk.
Keep getting closer and closer. Don't give up. Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley? Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And now we turn to item number thirteen, the town administrator's report. Uh, Mr. Milano?
Thank you. Um, as I mentioned last week, Veterans Day is coming up, and we'll have our regular ceremony on Friday, November eleventh. Um, the educational seminar series that is being put on, um, thanks to the town clerk in the Office of Town Council kicked off last Monday night with a session on the open meeting law. Um, that session was recorded. It is available on the Milton Access TV's website now. Um, so that's there. It's just a bit over an hour, um, very informative, um, since now it's the open meeting law. We did, the upcoming ones, I should mention, are public records on Tuesday, November twenty-second, uh, conflict of interest and state ethics on Tuesday, December thirteenth, both at seven P M. and in the Keys Conference Room in the library. Proud to announce the town received two grants, um, over the last week. One was a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the South Shore Economic Development Corporation, which is a subsidiary of the South Shore Chamber of Commerce. Um, that fifteen thousand dollar grant will be used for the zoning work, um, planned for East Milton, and that supplement to forty thousand dollar grant, the same work received by the Commonwealth, as well as ten thousand dollars in town funds. Um, that was requested by M P I C and approved by the select board earlier this year. So we appreciate, um, our partners at the South Shore Chamber of Commerce and their support. Um, in addition, the town received a fifty thousand dollar technical assistance grant from the Commonwealth, um, related to the M B T A communities, um, to help the town, um, as it navigates, uh, to approach the M B T A communities zoning requirements. And lastly, obviously, this weekend was Halloween, so hopefully everybody had a good Halloween. We were over at the, um, East Milton Deck for the scroll on, what was that, Saturday with my family. Um, and it was just mob. It was a, it was a great crowd, a gorgeous day. I mean, it was just a great weekend overall. So it was great to see everybody. And, um, although it looks like this weekend, weather will be even better. But, um, more events planned for the deck, and hopefully we continue to activate that space, um, after all the work that went into making it what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Milano, and I want to ask if you could pass along our appreciation to those who are responsible for the grants. So we love that initiative and we love the awards that are made. And, uh, this time, I'll turn it to the board to see if there are any questions of, Mr. Milano. Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question. Do we want to say what time the Veterans Day event is and where it's located? So that folks in town that might be watching know where to go and what, it's at eleven A M., I believe, at town.
All right, yeah, crucial details. Uh, the parade will take off from the high school at, um, ten forty-five. The ceremony will take place at eleven, um, in front of town hall. Apologize.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, and maybe, uh, we can ask then to, um, send around Kevin Cook's, um, flyer just as a bit of a reminder so that we can have it, um, available to us. Would that be all right? And I want to, uh, follow up on Nick's mentioning of the, um, two forthcoming, uh, uh, professional development sessions, one on public records and one on the conflict of interest state ethics, by saying that, um, the open meeting law presentation was more comments that I received, very well received. And we thank you, Kevin Freitag, for, um, your. for your preparation and delivery. This turns us to item number 14, the chair's report. I'll be very brief. I'll just mention that the chair of Beth Israel Decanist Hospital, Milton, Tony Gicello, whom many of us know, and is a long service to the town of Milton, both as a town meeting member and as advocate for the Milton Public Schools, invited Nick and I to meet with him and Richard Fernandez, the president of the hospital. We did so in the prone conference room for a solid hour and had what I thought was a very productive introductory meeting of people to one another and a good discussion. And Nick, you invited to add anything you would like to that.
No, I just, I would second what you said, and it's, it's, you know, a lot of our departments interact very closely with the hospital, and they've been out, they've been involved in our emergency planning groups and, you know, a good partner in terms of what we're looking for in terms of town services. So it's good to, to make, make those introductions. Thank you.
Thank you. Follow comment response. I will just quickly reiterate our appreciation to everybody for their comments this evening, particularly on item number seven, very valuable, 16. So future meeting dates, Tuesday, November 15th, 2022, Monday, December 5. And we'll meet earlier at 6:30 at a place to be designated. The reminder that the special town meeting in December on the 5th is gonna be held at Milton High School Auditorium. We're planning a meeting immediately thereafter on the 6th, and then on December 20. Ms. Bradley, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted folks to be aware that I will not be able to make the special town meeting on Monday, the 5th. I have a final exam that night. I won't be able to be there. So just so folks know for planning purposes, but I will be there on Tuesday, the 6th.
Thank you for that very much. We now return to meeting minutes for September 7th, 2022, September 20, 2022, and September 27, 2022. Do we have a motion on those meetings? Ms. Busta. You are muted, Roxanne.
My apologies. Sorry. I, on September 7th meetings, I just had under item number 12 at the end. I think I went over this with Lynn earlier, just to, just to add a few words onto it, to the end of the sentence, to say, as it has reached its goal. It's related to the youth committee. So I just wanted to change that in the minutes to reflect what was said. And otherwise, I thought the rest of the minutes were fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zulus.
Actually, I had a, a point on that, on both on, two things on the September 7th minutes. First, just because Roxanne mentioned it on item 12, the, the motion was improper and the vote was ineffective, so it, it could be confusing to people who read it later on. So I guess the question, it's really for town council, can we, can we put a reference in there to the, the, the motion being improper and the vote being ineffective, or how should we, how should, how should we handle that?
Thank you, recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what you might wanna do is take up your concern, add a, add a meeting and have a discussion about what exactly happened, and have a consideration of whether or not the vote, based on the way that it was described in the agenda was proper, and you just, I can certainly weigh in on it. I, I think that the, the agenda did not have enough notice that a vote to resolve the youth, the youth task force to be taken on that. I think there's a potential of the meeting law violation there, and the remedy would be to essentially acknowledge, afford a knowledge back, and you would have an additional discussion about what to do, or perhaps even have a vote that you could create that, you know, rather than ratifying the decision with your, 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 your agreement that's been put into the proper, but that should probably happen in the year.
Okay, and Mike, I may just add, I didn't catch that until after the meeting that it was a subject for discussion only and not for discussion and approval, and I apologize to you and to the public for that oversight on my part. I wanted to ask Kevin, might this be something, we have this topic on the agenda for our meeting of November 15. Maybe would it be appropriate to have two items on the agenda? The first one, which would be along the lines of what I think you were suggesting, and then we go to the, the topic as planned.
I think that's right. I think it could include both, and like I said, I think that there's a problem with the underlying vote and with the select board leaving the issue.
Thank you. And Mrs. Zulus.
Oh, the other thing I was just gonna mention, and this is really, it's in the context of the minutes, but I, I just wanna point out and, and for Mr. Milano or whomever else, under item seven, we did vote to publicize the volunteer opportunities for the Equity and Justice for All Committee, and so, so that, that is in the minutes. So I'll, I'll confine it to that because that's what the agenda is, but that is in item seven of, of the minutes. So we just wanna, we don't wanna lose sight of item seven in the September 7th minutes.
Thank you. And I wanted to also express gratitude to Lynn for the thoroughness of the minutes of the September 27th meeting in particular. The, this section on the joint meeting between the planning board and the select board, as I read, that were extremely well done. So thank you. Ms. Bradley, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I ask that when we make a motion, we separate out September 7th as one motion, and then the other two as another motion. I will have to abstain from the 7th because I will not, in attendance.
Okay, is that a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Well, well, I, I thought we were gonna defer on the 7th.
That's.
Oh, we are. Okay.
Until the 15th.
Okay, that's totally fine. I, I missed some of what Kevin was saying, so thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm, I'll make a motion that we, of September 20th and 27th.
Second.
Is a motion made and seconded? Call, call, vote, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yeah.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. I have number 18, youth task force discussion update. And it's here that I wanted to cover what we already did in particular on the omission on my part. Again, I apologize for that. And Mr. Zulus, you requested this item on the agenda, so would, you like to speak to it?
Well, no, I, I, I mean, I understood from the chair that, that we wanna defer to for, because Mr. Wells wants to speak to it. You know, it's been a while. This is, this is eight weeks ago now, and I think in the meeting, in the minutes we just approved from September 20th, Ms. Bradley and I both asked that it be considered, and so it's gonna be 10 weeks now. And so, seems to me the delay is not our friend here. We have a, a committee, and we've, we've, we've heard from parents, and we've heard from students who wanna participate, and they haven't had the opportunity to do so. And I think it's particularly difficult for seniors who may have wanted to participate, seniors in the Milton High School who may have wanted to participate. And, you know, as we go on and on, they're gonna lose that possibility. So, so I understand the, the desire to to, to let everyone weigh in, but it has been a while, and so hopefully it won't be, it won't be deferred again. We do have the commit, the youth task force is still in place, hasn't, as we discussed earlier, the motion was inappropriate. So I would certainly encourage parents and students who have expressed interest to get their applications in, and hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll be able to take some action on that. So, but I understand that I understand from the chair that we do wanna defer this, so I, I, I understand that, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Recognize Ms. Busta and Ms. Bradley in that order. Ms. Busta?
Oh, I think, I think Ms. Bradley had her hand up before me.
Okay, it's.
I don't wanna.
Go ahead.
He did, but then Mike clarified what I was looking for. I was just trying to figure out, since the vote wasn't effective, where that left the committee. So I'm off that. Again, not speaking. So thank you.
Thanks.
Um, thank you. So I just wanted to reiterate that certainly I think we should have a, a discussion on the 15th about this and go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have business and executive session. So we will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to National Law Chapter 38, Paragraph 21, Section 8, Subsection 6, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property located at 930 Brook Road, Fontbonne Convent Sisters of St. Joseph, after which we will adjourn for the evening from the select board meeting. Is there a motion? That was the item on the agenda that I read. I did not read the motion this time. I'd be coming home with.
I'll read the motion. I don't care.
Thank you, Roxanne, to the rescue.
I move to enter into an executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property located at 930 Brook Road, which is the Fontbonne Convent Sisters of St. Joseph. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board, the select board will not return to open session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Busta. Is there a second, please? Ms. Bradley?
Me, me.
You made it. Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yeah.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. And now we will into executive session. So the recording will drop.